Like to call the meeting to order for, wow, I'm not going to get used to this anytime soon. Like to call the regular Snore City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 16th at 5:00 PM. Councilmember Sagerstrom, would you do the pledge for us? Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hawkins.
Here.
Mayor Protem Plummer.
Here.
Councilmember Garaventa.
Here.
Councilmember Sagerstrom.
Here.
Councilmember Satch.
Here.
All five are here, thank you. City Clerks Report on Agenda Posting.
The agenda was posted on Thursday, February 11th at 2:30 PM.
And approval of the agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled?
At this time, no, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay. Presentations. Introduction and swearing in a police lieutenant, Jennifer Hanula.
How's that? Good? All right. So Jennifer began her law enforcement career in 1994 with the Masso Police Department as a reserve officer while she attended the Ray Simon Criminal Justice Training Center. She began working for the Stanislaus County Sheriff's Department in 1996. She comes with an impressive resume and has worked in many capacities within the profession. This includes corrections, patrol, mobile field force, critical incident negotiations, peer support, mounted unit, criminal investigations, coroner investigations, and internal affairs. She has served in the capacity of field training officer, patrol sergeant, and watch commander. Jennifer believes strongly in community relationships, has developed several programs at her previous agency that give back to the community. She looks forward to developing and participating in programs here in Sonora to give back to our community. With that, I will administer the oath. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear to support, defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. And I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. I will faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. All right, sounds good. It is my pleasure to introduce Lieutenant Jennifer Hanula.
I just want to thank you. Hopefully, I'll meet all of you individually, but thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Public comment on non-agenda items. The public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes of a presentation, and this is for any non-agenda items. That means anything that is not on the agenda. Feel free to raise your hand.
I see no public comment.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be voted on in one motion unless council member or member of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, the item may be, will be removed from the consent task, consent calendar, and considered separately. I'm tripping over my words already. Okay, so I will see if the public has any comment or questions on the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item number two, the city council minutes for January 19th. There does need to be an amendment to those minutes. We can still approve as amended, I just wanted to make the council aware of that amendment.
Okay. Okay, so any public comment on item number three of the consent calendar? No hands?
I see no hands.
Okay. Okay, so we'll bring it back to the council for approval on item number three on the consent calendar.
Mark, you're going to have to turn your mic on if somebody can hear you.
Mr. Mayor, I would very much like to move to approve the consent calendar, item number three.
Second. Okay, so motion by Mayor Protem Plummer and a second by oh, that is really tripping me out.
Yeah, I know.
Councilmember Garrett, Councilmember Garaventa, because we can't particularly see you. If you could, when you motion or second, would you mind just stating your name for the record?
Sure, I can do that. So Councilmember Garaventa, seconds.
Okay, and a second by Councilmember Garaventa, and it wasn't a ghost. Okay, so roll call vote, please, on item number three of the consent calendar.
Mayor Hawkins.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Plummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa.
Aye.
Councilmember Sagerstrom.
Aye.
And Councilmember Satch.
Aye.
Okay, so passes five zero. So we're coming back to item number two.
Mr. Mayor, if you will, we are actually utilizing our new MuniCode minute system. So you'll notice format's a little bit different. We're still getting used to utilization of those minutes. If you look at item number eight from January 19th meeting 2021, there was a consideration to approve an increase in Social Equity Committee item. The discussion of that item was placed in the minutes, but the action was inadvertently left off. So we need to amend the minutes to include the action, which was approval to increase the Social Equity Committee outcomes. So I would ask at this juncture to approve as amended to ensure that the action of that item gets included in the minute.
Sounds good to me. Okay, any council member questions, then I'll ask for any public comment. Okay, any public comment?
I see no hands.
Okay. Okay, so bring it back to the council, so we'll do, looking for a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second amendment. Okay, motion by Councilmember Satch and second by Mayor Protem Plummer. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hawkins.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Plummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa.
Aye.
Councilmember Sagerstrom.
Aye.
And Councilmember Satch.
Aye.
Okay, passes five to zero. Onto new business. Okay, new business, this is item number four. Authorize the fire department to submit an assistance to firefighter grant and staffing for adequate emergency response grant, SAFER, application. Authorize the city administrator to execute all documents relating to the grant application and direct the fire chief to return to the city council with the application results and to accept the award. There it goes.
At this time, I'm going to allow your fire chief to respond to this item, and she is with us via Zoom.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, member of the public. Tonight, I'm before you to ask approval to apply for some additional FEMA grants. The Assistance to Firefighter Grant, which is also known as AFG, and the Staffing for Adequate Emergency Response Grant, which is also known as the SAFER. This grant funding is critical. It's critical needed funding to resource equipment, training, emergency personnel, increase staffing, and enhance the efficiencies and support community resilience for our department. Snore Fire Department has secured several AFG and SAFER grant awards over the past several years. I'm requesting authorization to apply for these additional grants. One for the AFG is a fire prevention slash education and code enforcement grant. This would be for part-time inspectors to assist with defensible space inspections and education for the public. Also, the SAFER grant I'm requesting to apply for for funding for a third engineer position on sea shift because we do not have a full-time engineer on our sea shift staffing. And then as well as an AFG for a regional grant with five other agencies in Topeka County for new self-contained breathing apparatus to replace our aging and non-compliant equipment. The last ones we bought were back in 2005 on a grant as well, and the bottles are out of service as of January 31st. We did, we were able to secure some funding through Homeland Security, through the county, to replace some of the bottles, but the rest of the equipment is aging as well. So that grant would be to replace the self-contained breathing apparatus packs and bottles together. The fiscal impact, normally the FEMA grants require a 5% match. The AFG prevention and the self-contained breathing apparatus would require the 5% match. But the SAFER grant, notice a funding opportunity this year does not have a match. So the total funding together would not exceed $20,000 for those two. And the funding source would be from the fire department matching grant special revenue fund. It would be no impact to the general fund, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, Mayor Protem Plummer.
Amy, what's the, I'm just curious, I desperately want you to help you get this, that we get this, but what's the probability? I mean, I'm just curious how probable it is that we actually can get this.
Since 2015, the SAFER grant, we've actually received two. So the probability is high to receive that additional staffing for our engineer position. The SCBA grant is extremely high because we have equipment that is out of service, and it's a regional with other agencies in Topeka County. So that puts a little bit more emphasis on the grants being funded for regional. The prevention, I have tried one other time, two years ago, it was unsuccessful, but I think my writing skills and the fact that our wildland urban interface danger has increased, it hasn't gone away. That that is a high priority now in the grants for fire prevention and education, especially for defensible space. So I think the probability are high, as long as I can, I can write a proper grant, so I'm confident I can. And given the opportunity, I think the amount of funding that would be required from our deployment fund is minimal compared to what we would get if we do receive the grant.
I'll definitely be crossing my fingers for us and wish you the best, obviously. Would be insane not to support this effort, but okay, anyone else?
Okay, does any member of the public have any comments?
And just to remind the public, if you have public comment, please use your, raise your hand using the raise your hand feature, or if you're on a phone, using the star six feature on your phone. I see no hands, sir, at this time.
Okay. Okay, so we'll bring it back to the council. Any other questions or comments? So Chief New, I just want to say thank you. I know you put in a lot of work and it really shows, and I just, the whole city really appreciates all the hard work that you and the fire department do.
Thank you.
Looking for a motion in a second.
I'll move that, do we authorize the, the city council authorizes the fire department to submit an assistance to firefighter grant and staffing for adequate emergency response grant applications? Authorizes and authorize the city administrator to execute all documents.
I second.
And direct the fire chief to return to the city council with the application results.
Second. Okay, motion by Councilmember Sagerstrom and second by Mayor Protem Plummer. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hawkins.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Plummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa.
Aye.
Councilmember Sagerstrom.
Aye.
And Councilmember Satch.
Aye.
Passes five to zero. Again, thank you, Chief New.
Thank you very much.
Okay, under new business, item number five. Consideration to authorize the police department to accept a MiGIT? MiGIT, something, I can't pronounce it. Training Systems Virtual Reality Decisions and Tactics VR-DT Capital Asset from the California Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training Post with an estimated value of $50,000.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, and Honorable Counsel. We do request consideration to accept the MiGIT Training System. VR-DT is abbreviated as a city asset for the police department. In 2019, legislature granted, legislature granted California Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Trainings, which is known as POST, which governs standards and training for all California law enforcement agencies. Authority to spend up to $5 million on training equipment. POST research training equipment to support and enhance de-escalation and use of force training for peace officers. And ultimately identified the MiGIT VR-DT system, virtual reality system, as the best suited technology for the job. The VR-DT is pretty much a shoot-don't-shoot scenario-based program. I'm sure you've seen similar models on TV or advertisements. This particular one offers the best training possible for officers to sharpen their decision-making skills and help them take the most appropriate action when seconds count in critical situations. This system in particular allows for alternate outcomes based on de-escalation, de-escalation tactics used by the engaging officer or the playing officer. So for instance, if the instructor believes that the engaging officer, the officer in play applies appropriate de-escalation tactics for the situation, the instructor may decide to have the the virtual reality subject just comply and go with the program. So there's, they can build in alternate, alternate responses, and there's hundreds of possibilities of how to build it. But that's one of the biggest aspects of this. The POST wanted to do was incorporate the de-escalation aspect into this type of training. This system is being placed at 25 regional skills training centers in California and 50 law enforcement agencies throughout the state. It's also in many law enforcement agencies across the US, including some major agencies like Miami. Snore Police Department successfully coordinated with POST to receive one of these systems. As recipient, as recipient of the equipment, we will be making de-escalation and use of force training available for other law enforcement agencies in the area. The market value of the VR-DT is around $50,000 and would be received as a city asset. There is no cost to the city for the system to be in place, and, but, there will be travel and training expectations for cost for instructor certification and that type of thing, which will be absorbed by the current training budget for the police department. That's all I have. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Chief Vanderwill, I'm just kind of curious for the public's knowledge. I mean, we know a little bit about virtual reality. With this particular system, what is it? Is it something you get into, like you walk into a room and you're surrounded by screens? Or you give us kind of a small description?
Yes, this, this particular system is, is being built as a portable system, even though there's a significant amount of equipment, it turns out to it. But it can be set up in any room. I think the minimum they recommend is a 15 by 15 area of play, is what they call it. Basically, you have four towers that form a triangle or a rectangle or a square. And basically, they create the field of play. And 15 by 15 is what you want for that. And the player or the engaging officer wears a VR visor and VR earpiece. And so that, that player sees and hears what the program tells it to see and hear. And so the instructor will actually run the program and modify responses based on the officer's input. Is that pretty much?
Yeah, that answers a lot.
Okay.
Do any other members of the council have any questions?
I do. Oh. This is a curiosity question, I have a couple of questions actually, but does the trainer also, I mean, they're wearing the mask, are they observing from outside the play? So are, I mean, are they experiencing what the, what the trainee is?
Yes, as a matter of fact.
Experiencing?
Yeah, so the, the trainer, the trainer will be able to observe and basically modify input of how the play takes place. And there's also a viewing screen that goes along with it. So say we have a group of people possibly in another room, they can watch it on a monitor, and you will see exactly what that officer in play will see.
Okay, follow-up. It's not really related, but no, actually, the first one is. So there are glocks, shotguns, and all that. How do they work? I mean, are they, are they just tied in with it? Or do they have like an infrared beams that you see if they're on target? Or I'm really curious about how it's played. Then the, one of the items that we get with it is a stinger, which doubtless isn't an aircraft missile. So I'm really curious what a stinger is.
Stinger is actually a flashlight. So there's lots of equipment that comes with it, much of what you would see on a standard equipment belt for an officer, and they're all, they're replica, replica, but they all have, it's a type of Bluetooth-type technology that communicates. So the officer would not only wear, they'd wear wristbands that, you know, to follow movement, track and follow movement. And each piece, each tool, the firearm, the stinger flashlight, all that also has sensors in them, and it'll react with the, with the program.
Okay, last question, and that is, part of, part of the grant requires that we share this, that we host other agencies, and so I guess my question is, do the other agencies, would they normally pay something to cover the time? Or is our time part of the benefit of receiving the grant?
So that, we could, we, you know, once we develop a POST-approved training format, we could do it two ways. We can charge, you know, just to cover the costs of implementing it. Right, overtime or whatever. And then obviously, there's no cost to us for the equipment, so we could offer it at a very minimal, minimal fee just to cover our costs. And it would be, I, I'm I'm certain that it would be very well-used and very welcome in the area because they're not all over the place. Usually, you either have to travel to get that training, or I think the, you know, the mobile unit, the portable unit of a few years ago was actually in the back of a semi-trailer that had to be toted around. So it's a lot more versatile, and I think having folks move, you know, just come within the, in the county to do that training, it's a lot more affordable than sending them out of county.
Well, it'd be wonderful if we get it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other council member questions or comments? Okay, we'll ask for any public comment at this time. Feel free to raise your hand.
I don't see any hands raised at this time, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
If there's no further discussion, I would very much like to move to authorize the police department to accept a MiGIT Training System Virtual Reality Decisions and Tactics Capital Asset from the California Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training with an estimated value of $50,000.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Mayor Protem Plummer and a second by Councilmember Satch. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hawkins.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Plummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa. Councilmember Garaventa. Councilmember Sagerstrom.
Aye.
And Councilmember Satch.
Aye.
Excellent, passes five to zero. Thank you, Chief. Okay, under new business, item number six. Authorize the Snore Police Department to submit a cannabis tax fund grant program application in the amount not to exceed $50,000. Authorize the city administrator to execute all documents relating to the grant application and direct the police chief to return to the city council with the application results and to accept the award.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we would request authorization to submit the CTFGP grant application. And this is just for the application, and I would obviously be back in front of you to accept the award if so awarded. This grant funding comes from the state of California and will be allocated through the California Highway Patrol. The purpose of this funding is to address impaired driving and to help prevent the loss of life, injuries, and property damage caused by driving under the influence of alcohol and/or drugs. These funds from this grant program are to be used for training, education, DUI prevention, and DUI enforcement, which includes driving under the influence of cannabis and cannabis-related products. Since Prop 64 and subsequent legislation, there is a greater need to focus enforcement efforts on drug-related DUI enforcement. And driving under the influence of cannabis has become a significant concern for law enforcement and public safety. The Snore Police Department will be asking for funds to augment training and education, equipment needs, as well as overtime and administrative costs. The funding is for a 24-month grant cycle, and the financial expenditures are reimbursed quarterly during the fiscal year. And the fiscal year is the same as ours, June to June. So there is no local match for this project, for the project award under this grant. And we would be asking for no more than $50,000, we're targeting $50,000 for, for the grant request.
Any council member questions or comments?
I have a question, if I may pose it, and that was, what's, what are, what does one use nowadays to test whether someone is under the influence of cannabis?
So there's no roadside test, as in, you know, the breathalyzer, which, which we're real familiar with. Approved at this point, there's a lot of models being, being developed right now, and I think Canada has one in play. But there's, there's no tool like that. So, you know, yes, we can, we can measure THC levels in the bloodstream, you know, after someone's arrested, and we pull the evidence sample that way. So really, it's going to come down to the, the training aspect of this, you know, getting as many people as we can to drug recognition-type training, roadside drug recognition-type training to help develop that probable cause for the, the driving under the influence arrest for, for drugs.
Training will be awfully important then, because that's kind of tricky.
It's, it's, it's always been challenging because there's, you know, it's not, it's not new to us to have people driving under the influence of drugs, and some drugs are pretty obviously specific to what reactions you see. Marijuana is not as easily identifiable, so the more training we can get on that for officers, the better.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for public comment. Feel free to raise your hand if you would like to speak on this matter.
I don't see any public comment at this time.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to the council. I guess looking for a motion and a second.
I'll move to authorize the Snore Police Department to submit a cannabis tax fund grant program application in the amount in an amount not to exceed $50,000 and authorize the city administrator to execute all documents relating to that grant application and direct the police chief to return to the city council with application results and accept award.
Second. Okay, so motion by Councilmember Satch and second by Mayor Protem. Okay, so motion by Councilmember Sutch and second by Mayor Pro Tim Plummer.
Sagerstrom.
Sagerstrom, sorry. It's been a long day.
The other ass.
Oh, I will do that a lot too. Okay, so motion by Councilmember Sagerstrom and second by Mayor Pro Tim Plummer. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hawkins.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Plummer.
Hi.
Councilmember Garaventa.
Hi.
Councilmember Sagerstrom.
Hi.
And Councilmember Sutch.
Hi.
Passes five to zero. Okay, so the big one for the night, uh, under new business, item number seven. Approve the amended Questa Heights, Questa Heights vesting tentative subdivision map. Reducing the number of lots to forty-six and following phasing plan. A phase one lots one through five and seven through ten. Phase two, six, eleven to thirteen and twenty-four to forty-three. Phase three, lots fourteen to twenty-three, forty-four to forty-six. Number two is approve the revised Questa Heights subdivision conditions of approval. Approve the renaming of Cassie Way to Dot Drive. And then number four is approve a two-year extension for Questa Heights subdivision vesting tentative subdivision map. The tenant map approval will be extended to March third, twenty twenty-four. Mary Rose.
This time, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have your community development director um present the item for you.
Thank you, council members. Um, it does feel good to come to the podium. It's been a long time. Um, so um. What you have before you tonight is for an existing project that was approved. It's the Questa Heights subdivision. Um, it's located on twenty point seven six acres. Um, it's at the intersection of Shaw's Flat and Roble Road. Um, the vest tentative map was approved by the city council as long as well as the SEQA document. The environmental document, the mitigated NAD deck, um, back on March third, two thousand eight. They approved forty-nine residential units at the time and a tank lot. That was to serve as a water tank uh facility for TUD. Um, the project was approved. Um, it is zoned R one and on the general plan, which is single family. And then as well as on the general plan, it's also R one or a single family residential. Uh, the project original developers were Dave and Sherry Cowden. Um, they started on the project and then, as we all know, the recession hit almost immediately after their project got approved. Um, they started, uh, they did do a lot of the improvement plans. They also did some geotechnical studies and other studies that were required under the project. Including the analysis of the trees on the site as part of the landscape requirements. Um, and a re uh the replanning plan for the trees. So they they did start through the process. Um, uh, the city at the time had three large tentative map subdivisions on the books at the time. We had one on another one on Shaw's Flat down by the bus barn. We had this project and then we had the Hicks project, which is on highway forty-nine, um, going out of town on the left. Um, they have a large parcel there. Um, so all three of the subdivision maps within the city got automatic state extensions. Um, uh, the state did this multiple times because of the recession, because they did not want all the maps in the state of California to go away. Because people couldn't meet the the deadlines for getting their map final. Um, because of the recession and the costs associated with it. In order to final a subdivision map, all of the improvements, the streets, the utilities, everything has to be installed. Or bonded for in order to final the maps. So that's a big cost to the developers. And that's one of the reasons when the recession hit, everybody was afraid and housing prices dropped. They just stepped aside and and waited to ride the storm, as you would say. This is the only subdivision map that's still viable. The other two subdivision maps in the city have gone away. Um, they've expired. They were not extended any longer by the original developers or any new buyers. So this this is really the only subdivision that's in the process right now in the city. They um sold the property. It was sold from Dave and Sherry Cowden recently to SV one-ten LLC, which is a limited liability company. Um, it's made up of some local individuals in the city or in the county. Um, Greg Popovich is here tonight. He is representing the project and he can answer any questions that you might have of them. The amended tentative subdivision map. Uh, reduces the number of lots in the project from forty-six or from forty-nine to forty-six. Uh, the main reason for this reduction, there's two. Uh, one TUD because the tank, water tank has now been installed on the property. That tank is a large tank that provides water to not only this project, but that whole area. It increases the water pressure for that whole area, um, which is a big help for um the fire. Especially fire protection. Um, so the tank was installed by TUD. Um, all the water lines were put in. Um, and it did, they ended up using more property than originally the tank lot was going to. And I've included for you the original subdivision tentative map that was approved and the revised amended map. And you'll see that TUD actually on the tank lot is larger. And then there's a smaller parcel where they have a pump station down along Shaw's Flat Road. And both of those have subsequently been deeded to TUD. They also um sold off one of the smaller parcels along Roble Road, right at the corner. Um, Cowden sold that off, so those two, that parcel is no longer part of the project. So with that property gone, um, it lessened the number of lots from forty-nine to forty-six. And that's what's being proposed under the amended tentative map. Um, under uh the city subdivision ordinance, section sixteen point oh three point oh eight six E. Minor changements or changes or amendments can be approved by the council. Um, as long as no lots or units or building sites are added. And such changes are consistent with the attendance fair to the original map. And there's no resulting violations of any of our ordinances or laws. So they amended to drop it from forty-nine to forty-six meets these requirements. The original map is very, very much like the original or the revised map. Um, it, there are only six parcels that have changed. Um, the remaining of the remaining parcels are are the same. So um, they are meeting that requirement. They are not in the violation of the needs ordinance of the law of the city. Um, they're also subject to the hillside ordinance. Um, so at the time subdivision was approved. All the um uh calculations were done to make sure that they fell within uh the requirements. Uh, they were determined to have a twenty point two percent maximum density of four dwelling units per acre. Um, and so with the forty-six, um, at the originally, they were at two point two with the forty-six. They're still at two point two dwelling units, so they're below the density of four, so they meet that requirement as well. They are requesting this to be a three-phase. And as the mayor said, um, in the uh recommended approvals. They have broken out the phases into three phases. One is phase one lots one through five, seven to ten. Those are all basically along Shaw's Flat Road and back a little ways off the road. Phase two is lot six, eleven through thirteen and twenty-four through forty-three. And then phase three lots fourteen through twenty-three, forty-four through forty-six. So um, the developer who is with us tonight, he can kind of explain if you have any questions about the proposed phasing. And why they have it broke up the the way they do. But essentially what it allows them to do with a phasing map is they have, then they'll have three final maps instead of one. They can um do the improvements for phase one. They can put in all their public utilities. And their street improvements for phase one as approved. And then they can take the funding after they sell those lots. Um, and start and use those funds to work on phase two and then ultimately phase three as the project. So it allows them to start selling off lots without having to bond for all the improvements for the entire project upfront. With if the extension is approved tonight, they will have to have all final maps approved or and finalized. And recorded prior to that date of March third, two thousand and twenty-four. Um, or they'll have to bond for any remaining improvements that they haven't completed. So that's that's the that's the reason for the phasing. It's to help them finance and get some money in their pockets so they can move forward with the project. Under subdivision, uh, our subdivision ordinance sixteen point oh three point one hundred E five. Multiple final maps related to an approved or conditionally approved tentative map. May be filed prior to the expiration of the tentative map. If um they do it at the time when their map's approved or they can come back like they are tonight and ask the city council to approve a phasing plan. So that's what also what we're doing tonight. So the um vesting, it is a vesting tentative map. For those of you that don't know what that means, a vested tentative map means that they are only subject to whatever regulations. Were in place at the time the map was approved. That's why they go for a vesting map because it it gives them a pretty sure footing on any changes. That might occur and how it might affect their projects in the future. This doesn't apply to state and federal law, so any changes to the fire codes or the building codes or any federal changes, they're subject to that. But our local ordinances, if we had come up with something new, um, they're not subject to those changes. The so um. Let me see what I I just want to catch up with myself. So currently the tentative map, oh, and I wanted to let you know, they did the drainage study, study. The geotechnical investigation and the stormwater pollution plan. And like I said, they also worked on the landscaping requirements. They already went before the park and beautification committee. So currently the tentative map is set to expire on March third, twenty twenty-two. They received some city extensions. They received some um statements and automatic state extensions. Um, so they're at right now, they're scheduled to expire on March third, twenty twenty-two. Um, there is, under the California government code, they have one more opportunity for an extension. And that is what they're asking for tonight. Um, the code section provides that upon application of the subdivision fire, subdivider, sorry. Filed prior to the expiration of the approved or conditionally approved tentative map, which is what they've done, it's still approved. The time of which the map expires makes me extended by the city council for a period not exceeding a total of six years. And this is beyond the ten years. In addition to the ten years provided under government code section six, six, four, five, two, point six A. So this actually gets, uh, would have allowed them to have a new expiration date for their tentative map of March third, twenty twenty-four. And that's what we're requesting. Um, that'll provide them the additional time to get going. Um, so they've gone, I have to say they have done a lot of prep work. They just haven't got the map filed and they haven't started putting stuff in the ground. And there's been a lot of expense on the subdivision. Um, and currently, um, even the new owners have had quite a bit expense on this project already and they're just getting started. Um, under uh section sixteen point oh three, one hundred E five. Um, under the subdivision ordinance for the city, you got, the city council is allowed to impose reasonable conditions. Relating to the final of multiple maps. Um, so even though you can't add new conditions, you can modify the conditions at the time of the phasing. And the modifications are based on when each of the conditions go into effect. So whether they come into effect on phase one, phase two or phase three. Or whether they're in effect all of the throughout every phase, which many of them are. And then anything that's changed on the ground, so or changed and lost. So Amy has some modifications to her fire restriction or fire conditions. Because if they're only going to build part of the road, she needs to be able to turn around. So that's a condition. So that's in there. Um, all residential um units have to have sprinklers nowadays, so that wasn't the case in two thousand eight. So that's been modified. So all of that has been incorporated in. But those are requirements that are on the on the existing laws, federal, state laws that were, um, they have to comply with. Or changes that have been caused because the the thing, the conditions on the ground have varied. Um, at the time that the map was recorded, as I said, they had a SEQA document that they had to do. So all of the environmental and environmental analysis, analysis was done for the forty-nine lots. And that included traffic studies, it included everything related to that. And so that the project was approved with conditions, they included their mitigation measures for any environmental like, like the turn pocket. On Shaw's Flat Road, the left turn, um, that is one of the things that came out of that. Um, the left turn pocket is like we talked about where we um looked at each of the conditions to see when they would. Whether they were so relevant and when they should come into play on the project. And the left turn pocket, for example, doesn't have to be built till the second phase. But it has to be laid out in the right of way dedicated and it has to be included on their improvement plans. So that we know that it can be built in the right of way before any lots are sold on the phase one. So that is an example of how we went through each condition. Um. As I stated here, the fire chief, city engineer and myself met with the project applicants. And then we went through and we looked at all the conditions. Jerry provided us feed, me feedback and so did Amy and we incorporated those changes into the conditions. So um Jerry is on, he's there. Uh, Jerry is here with us tonight too. When I wrap this up, um, I'll let him comment on anything that he wants to make sure that you guys understand on the project. Um, Steph is, I have included for you a copy of the revised conditions. And I tried to make it very clear, not only for you, but um down the road, this is going to be around for a while. And people need to understand what we what what we're what we're doing tonight or what we're asking you to do. So what we did is we revised them as of tonight's date. We italicized anything that's different or new and then we strike through anything that isn't a logger in a as applicable. Applicable. So the tank lot is a non-issue anymore. It's already been deeded to TUD. That's that part of the project is done. So there is no more tank lot. Now we're looking at a forty-six lot subdivision. Um, all of the required plans, anything that has already been submitted to Jerry or to community development. They need to go through and make sure and update them, make sure there's no changes. Um, they're going to have to relook at trees and give me a revised one as they go through each phase and so we get through that part of the project. So that is all within those conditions. Um, we talked about the left turn pocket. Um, and we also talked about the hammerhead that fire, the fire department's going to need on Questa Heights Road. Because Questa Height Road, High, Questa Heights Road is going to dead end in phase one. They have to be able to turn around a fire truck, so there's going to be a hammerhead requirement. The other thing to keep in mind is the idea for is for them to develop phase one, two and three. Base one will happen first and um it could be that they never do do phase two or three. So when we're looking at project conditions, we need to make sure that whatever is developed in phase one. Will meet the needs of the city in case phase two and three never happen. The other thing we have to keep in mind is the improvements they put in in phase one or phase two need to be laid out. So they meet the requirements of phase three, so they're not, you're not coming back and trying to do work on lots that have already been sold. Because they didn't get put in the right position. So there's a lot to think about, you guys, when we're working through all this. Um, so again, um, like I said, we we went through, we italicized everything that was new or modified. Uh, we striked out the things were no longer relevant. One is they're not going to have an LP gas tank lot any longer. Um, they're going to, everybody would have individual tanks, so that is not relevant to the project, so that was removed. Um, and again, we added some, a lot of fire requirements. Amy had some things that she wanted to make sure that they complied with current law. Um, and then the road improvements and the changes um there. So there weren't a lot of changes. Um. And as you can see, when you go through, there there really wasn't. There was a lot more related to the roads, I mean, to fire than anything else. So, um. And then we had to, one other thing we had to do is kind of where it talked in conditions about certain lots being affected, like there's a buffer required. For some of the lots on for landscaping. Um, and they used to be on lots ten, eleven and twelve. Well, now that's on lots twenty-seven, twenty-eight and twenty-nine because the numbering has changed. So we wanted to make sure that we got that in there. So those are the condition, that's what we did with the conditions. Developer has seen them, um, has not expressed any concerns. Um, we worked really hard to try to work with them to make it reasonable for the city and reasonable for them. To get the project approved and through, well, the project's already approved, but to get through this process. We did notify everybody. We did notify everybody within three hundred feet of the meeting for the public hearing tonight. And then we did, I received one phone call. And from my understanding is you guys received an email and I believe it probably was the same person that contacted me by phone. Um, and that is the only thing that we've received as of tonight. And there might be additional public comment tonight. Again, this is an already approved vested tentative map. This is not a new project. This is allowing them to move forward and try to make this project happen. It's been on the books and it's gone through a lot of issues with the state of the economy has really impacted subdivisions. This is the only subdivision that we have. And I I'll tell you, I haven't had a call on a subdivision in years in the city. So there's not a lot of people out there looking to develop subdivisions quite yet. So it it would be a shame to lose some new housing in the city. As you know, they are required on this project to come to provide four thousand dollars to the city's low income housing fund um, for each lot at the time the building permit is pulled. Those funds would be combined with other housing funds like our CDBG or I mean our redevelopment, the old redevelopment funds that we've been had paid back or under our housing fund or maybe some CUBG, um, but those funds can be used in that manner for low income housing. That was the requirement that they were required to do. The density is not a issue as far as SEQA. We have to be real careful. As you could see, you can approve it if it's less units, you can approve, you cannot approve it with more units. Um, not only does the subdivision ordinance not allow it, nor does nor with the SEQA document, and they'd have to start over for you would kill the project. Um, so anyway, Jerry's on the phone or on Zoom. And I know the project applicant is also available for any questions. So I'd like to have Jerry make any comments. He can give you some map information and then I can answer any questions as well.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Jerry.
Uh, yes, I, uh, yeah, I think Rochelle covered it very well. Uh, this uh, particular subdivision, uh, if it goes to construction will be will be fifteen years since the last one went. And that last one was the bungalow subdivision down there off of Stockton, uh, Stockton Street in Bondarosa. And so I'm kind of looking forward to to seeing this project go. It's a, it's really, to me, is a nice subdivision. In two thousand eight, it actually wasn't in the city. And it was a pre-approved, pre-zoned and approved as a subdivision prior to come being annexed into the city. And then when it was annexed into the city, then then this recession hit. Then uh, they were unable to to proceed with with the construction. Although they did do all the engineering and all the plans have been done. And with this phasing now, all they have to do is now just update all those those plans for each phase. And I I think it's a very nice project. Does any specific question on the requirements? There's there's ten pages of 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 conditions that the that were imposed on this project. So I I think it's a it's a good good to go, and I hope you approve it.
Any council members have? Go ahead, council member.
Jerry, I don't know if this is for you or for Rochelle. I just have a question about Cassie Way soon to be dot drive. Um, it's one way. I'm just curious why that was put in as a one-way street. It seems like it dumps a disproportionate amount of traffic onto Roble Road instead of.
Uh, well, it had to do with. It it has to do with the number of frontages on the street as well as it's on a slope. And so you wanted to try to get a narrower road in there. So they made it a one-way, a one-way road. So uh, uh, on it, we we have that in other other areas where we had uh, some roads up there like Morning Star, which we we made them, they're narrow roads. Uh, and they're not the the roads for parking both sides or just a one-side parking.
Hey, anyone else? Oh, Mr. Mayor.
And this is a question for Rochelle, I believe. But so this is times dragging out, so to speak, for the new purchaser. That's a fairly narrow time window. They have to try and get anything done. If my understanding is correct, they can start the phases. They just have to have the final maps and either bonding or infrastructure in place by that. What is it? March?
March third, twenty twenty four.
Okay, is this the legally the longest time that we can make?
Yeah, we can't. Um, this is, that's why I gave you. It's the California government code. This is this is their, this is their last hurrah. They've they've got anything that's available to them. I double test, I double checked with our county, our city council or the city attorney to make sure that we are going through all the code sections correctly. Um, because this is the longest extension there's ever been. As Jerry can attest on maps, but there we didn't go through a recession on most of them. Um, and so they said, I was absolutely correct that they are eligible for this last extension, but that would be the final.
Okay, thank you. That really covers my question for you.
So Rochelle, before you go, I did have one question. And then did any other council members have any questions? Okay, um, it reading through this, it says something along the lines of no burn, no wood burning fireplaces. And I understand that regular log burning fireplaces in the state of California are not legal any longer. Um, does that include the pellets type stoves? Because I know that those tend to be legal in many areas according to emission standards.
So I would have to check. So that comes out of their SEQA document. That's for air pollution, air quality. So I'd have to verify as we get down the, you know, if once this is done, we can check with air pollution control to see if there are if the pellet stoves would be something that would be prohibited or if we could allow it if somebody wanted to put one in. But that's where it comes from is air quality.
I know that that is something really being pushed, more pushed now because of all the basically the dead and dying trees that we have in the forest, and there's still a use for them. And it's pretty environmentally friendly, too, if if that's your if that's your thing. So I had I had to ask. So, um, council member Garaventa.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions just to make, just to make sure I got it in my mind. So all the road infrastructure in each phase would be constructed during each phase?
Correct.
Okay. And then Lot seven, it looks like Lot seven, which is kind of the one that's in behind. I assume that that is a driveway that goes out to Shaw's Flat Road.
That is.
Okay.
It's a joint.
Make sure. Now, what would preclude any Lot seven from having, is there any preclusion for Lot seven to be a future, have a future driveway on to Longview Circle? Or is there?
You know, I don't know. We'd have to. It's not proposed that way.
Okay.
But we, we can, you can ask the developer on that.
I just be curious. If there's any, and that's it.
Okay.
Um, I know that the developer is available. Um, normally on projects, I know Plan Commission, we usually give them an opportunity. So I know that he would like to make some comments.
Sure, let's speak to the developer.
Uh, Greg is on Greg Popovich.
Well, council mayor, thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. Uh, the project is a project that I've watched for years and years and years. When Dave Cowden came to me, he said, Greg, what what can we do here? My my map is ready to expire. It's going, it's going to basically disappear. I said, well, why don't we do some more research and see if we could revive it and make it to where it's able to to be built? Uh, we did a lot of soul searching and a lot of numbers and a lot of things on how much money is already invested in the project and how much more it will take to sit there and to complete. We decided that it was a feasible project based on the map that's there, even though we did lose three lots. When we were originally talking about it was forty nine lots. The three lots have now gone, so we're down to forty six, which has put a little bit of a financial impact on it, but it's something that can still work as long as we go with the phasing proposal that we we put in front of you. I've done a number of projects, and when you try to do the projects all at once, if you have another two thousand and eight, it can cause great problems. And then that's when the projects go into basically fail. So what we've done is we've created a plan and worked with Jerry and Rochelle, and they've been great giving us comments and suggestions and things that can be done in order to make this a better project. And worked with them on the phasing in order to sit there and come up with a plan that works both economically as well as realistically. It's something that we don't want to try and put forty six pieces of property on the market at once because it could be financially devastating if the market has even a hiccup. So the way we're doing it seems to be very systematic in order to keep the project going in a positive manner and working towards conclusion, which is completion. Um, even if we get through phase two and the map is ready, getting closer in twenty twenty four, which is faster than than it seems in development, um, we would be able to possibly bond for the final phase and complete that map at that time, which would allow us the time in order to do the rest of the development. The reason, one, another one of the reasons for phasing is to bond for the whole project is cost prohibitive. The bonds are very, very expensive. And we would much rather put that into the infrastructure that's already there. A lot of the the items that have been done, and I don't know that a couple of them have been addressed tonight, is that tank lot as well as the lot down at the bottom for TUD was basically donated to TUD to put into that project. Unfortunately, the pipelines that were put in were put in at depths that aren't necessarily conducive to the final development. So TUD went forward, attempting to work with a prior developer to get that rectified, but it wasn't able to happen. There was a number of circumstances with the past developer that came up that put him into a situation to where he wasn't able to complete that. So there will be a lot of redo, unfortunately, in this project, which is quite costly as well. So the piping that TUD put in will have to be reworked a little bit in order to put in the roads that we need to put in for the subdivision. Um, that's something that that TUD is very willing to to work with us on as much as possible. I've talked with the engineers at TUD and they're they're more than more than happy to sit there and to try to make something work for us because they see the project as a huge asset to Sonora. Um, it also created a a huge asset in the form of fire flow and and all the things that the city was kind of lacking in a water capacity situation. Um, the unfortunate part is it's the best lot in the subdivision, but sometimes that's the price you need to pay for for public safety and and things like that. So any questions you have, I'd be more than happy to field them for you.
Any members of the council have any questions? Okay, I guess there are no questions. So, oh. The mayor Protim has a question.
Yes.
Oh, sorry about that. Mr. Bob Popovich, my understanding is that new homes have to have sprinklers. And I thought they required solar as well. Is that true? Are these under older rules because it was originally approved two thousand eight?
No, that is true. Each of these homes will require solar. All new homes in California, as of, I believe it was January twenty twenty require solar to be installed in order to help compensate for some of the energy usage. I build affordable housing throughout the Bay Area right now, and we even have to put the solar on what's called an ADU, which is an accessory dwelling unit. So we're required to put solar even on small granny flats or in lock orders, whatever you'd like to call them. But they're known in the the government as an ADU accessory dwelling unit. So even on small units like that, we're required to put solar. So that'll be a big asset to to the subdivision as well.
How much does the those extras add to the cost of a home nowadays? Or I mean, I don't know what size homes you're building, but imagine per square foot, but I'm really curious how much how prohibitive that is to buyers?
It's approximately twenty thousand dollars for the solar to add on to the the new home. Um, there's a number of laws that have taken place for energy that have added quite a huge amount of money to the cost of development and building. Um, they have, they're they're with good intent, but I don't know if they're thoroughly vetted to to see what the impacts are. So there that is, the solar is going to be applied to the home, so.
And the sprinklers as well, then? They're required, I think.
The sprinklers are.
How much do they add?
Uh, they will add approximately eight to twelve thousand dollars depending.
Okay, so this is thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars more than a house built last year would have cost.
It adds up very rapidly.
And so with the phasing is is, I'm thinking of it from your perspective, but is this realistic to be able to start, get started and make money? And hopefully carry the project, I mean, have at least a reasonable hope of carrying the project through to the whole, the entire forty six homes?
Um, it it's definitely a realistic hope and it's it's, hopefully, it's a lot more than a hope. Not a plumber. It's a, there is a lot of roadblocks and costs that go into development. That's why you probably have seen, I believe, Mr. Ficello had mentioned that there's only been one original developer in a subdivision in Sonora since the beginning, I believe, without them running into financial troubles. The way that we've structured this with the phasing is that it gives us the opportunity and the ability to keep moving forward without having to put the huge capital outlay up front, which has a huge interest expense associated with it, which basically eats up the whole project while you're going along. It's sort of a self cannibalizing entity once you try to do something like of that scale and that size all at once.
So and then my last question is, what price range, do you have an idea, either square footage or price range? I'm hoping that at least some of these homes will be something that we can imagine our children being able to buy.
Absolutely. We're hoping that these are move-up homes. They'll be approximately five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the lot costs alone, just to do development costs will be between forty five and sixty five thousand dollars per lot. And we're looking at possibly building out the entire subdivision ourselves instead of selling the lots individually, because if you've done any type of research on the lot sales in the county, they're very incredibly anemic. They don't don't exist for the most part. Uh, there hasn't been any speculation building or any type, very much new construction at all um, in the in Tooluma County. And so with that being said, the home prices, we're hoping to be in the starting in the four hundred thousands going on up to possibly even the six hundred thousands in the top lots um, up on top. What that's what's helped is that for the move-up buyers, they're able to move up and then create some more housing on the the lower ends. That's what the the hope always is. Obviously, you have buyers from outside the area that come in. You also have buyers inside the area that are going to be coming to the new jobs that will be created. Um, the casino, a number of different establishments. Um, and we're very incredibly hopeful that there will be a a lot of new jobs coming to the county soon.
Well, thank you very much. I'm very hopeful that we can see this through to completion. We need more homes. But thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Popovich, I do have a question for you. You stated just a, and this is somewhat related to this project. You stated. You stated um a couple of minutes ago that you were doing affordable housing in the Bay Area?
Yes, sir.
So theoretically speaking, if you did well with this project, would that encourage you more to want to do other projects here in the city like affordable housing?
Um Mayor, I would definitely be of interest or interested in doing that. There's um some grant basically to create affordable housing. The the affordable housing I'm creating is or called A D Us. It goes on to land that is already owned by a property owner. I build the granny flats or or units in their backyard. Or attached to their homes, which creates an affordable unit for either rental or it it's very kind of. Gratifying because one of the one unit, just as an example, I just built. Was for in a a special needs adult child. Who is going to live in the A D U in order to take care of their elderly parents. So it there's all sorts of incredible uses for these type of units. And I would be very open to it, but the thing is, is when you do in scale on your own properties. There needs to be some sort of grant money, tax credits, some sort of incentive. In order to do that, and the reason being is the cost of construction. As Councilman Plummer pointed out a little while ago, is huge now, and to try to make it pencil. It it goes into the red almost immediately, and so with the grants, the tax credits and things like that, you're able to sit there and do that. Um I have another property. In the city that has part of it is. Or was the map is expired. It was one of the unfortunately failed projects that I bought after the fact. Um had a what's called a planning development section to it, which was going to be affordable housing. I would love to see something that like that resurrected to where I could build. A D Us or A D U sized homes up to twelve hundred and square feet. Have a common area to where people could congregate and make it a nice smaller. Unit community that would be incredibly affordable. I have some visions on that that are phenomenal that we can talk about another time. But I've been instrumental in trying to to figure out some solutions for the homelessness problems in Sonora. I've um. I've 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 become passionate on the affordable housing front. Unfortunately, I'm unable to offer this particular subdivision. In that type of capacity because the development costs are so huge. Um but something along the lines of taking another property and being able to turn it into something like that would be of great interest to me, and I would love to talk to you more about it. There's some properties um that the the city may own that that may may have some. Potentials as well for something like that or that type of concept. So when we have time or or when you have time, feel free to give me a call and I'll I'll be more than happy to talk to you about that. It's a great. Great idea, very much needed up here in Sonora. But like I said, unfortunately, I'm I'm unable to offer that on this particular project. Something in the future? Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at. So yeah, I I will definitely be in touch with you. So any other council member questions or comments? Or I turn it over to public comment? Okay. So looking for raised hands. I see one.
I do, and just a reminder, if you're on Zoom to use the raise your hand feature, and if you're on the phone to star nine, if you are calling it. Or star six, excuse me, star six. And we have one hand. For uh Mr. Darren.
And it is a limit of three minutes.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Darren.
Okay, so uh with this project, I I live very close, very, very, very close, and I am supportive of having additional housing here. The thing that kind of I want to know is my actual yard drains down that ravine and I back up and it becomes a six foot. Pool by. About twenty five feet wide by about forty feet long every single year. Now, is that a T U D? Do I get with T U D? Because I've called and asked and. Nobody's ever done anything for me, but. I live right there. Directly affects me in this in this full process. Uh. But I do agree, we do need housing. And that close to me, I'm good with it. That road doesn't have a lot of safety issues. There isn't a a lot of traffic, so having forty six additional houses, I don't see as being a. Major problem. Quest Oaks has a bunch, and I'm sure there's a there's a twenty acre lot that's right down the street from that. That's for sale also. That's probably going to be developed as well. So it it all ties in, but I'd really like to know. Who do I contact if this is going to be built and there's going to be drainage and there's going to be runoff? That can come out and survey and tell what the problem is, that kind of stuff. Thanks. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else with their hands raised?
The men.
The men.
Demon, go ahead and unmute yourself. Demon. Go ahead and speak.
We are listening.
Is he speaking? I think he's that he's. We cannot hear you, demon.
This is Carrie Fuller, City Attorney. Um I'm on Skype and it looks like he is unmuted, but there's like a technical problem where we aren't hearing him.
So, okay, so are they still?
Might have to call in instead. So at this time, demon, we can't hear you. If you can, please try to call in and we can try to. Um take your public comment. Otherwise, um unfortunately, it's a technical problem at this point and we can't hear your comment.
Is there anyone else with their hands raised?
No, sir. I do not see anybody with their hand raised. Is that our phone line?
That's a different one.
Sorry, guys. Bear with me, it's new.
So do you have an image for demon or just a black screen?
Very dark.
Oh, well. If he could signal that he's going to telephone in, we could wait another minute then, but.
Okay, let's go and take that hand and then.
Go ahead and take Karen Foster. Go ahead, Karen Foster.
Karen Foster.
She has no audio. There's no audio on that.
Okay. Okay, so Karen Foster, we we cannot hear you either.
So are we having a problem with our technology at all?
I don't see that she has audio. She only has video.
We'll give it about thirty seconds to.
At this time, if uh we're having a hard time understanding demon or Karen Foster, we can't hear your audio. We will wait just a second for you guys to call in if you would still like to produce some sort of public comment. Otherwise, um. We would have to. Take additional public comment or move on back to the council.
Absolutely. Learning, always a learning phase.
Very.
So many things. So so while we're waiting on public comment, there was a question I had in um. I was looking through the uh I assumed I I assumed and I looked it up that all the utilities were undergrounded. It doesn't mention broadband or internet. But I would assume that we there would be some provision to at least co- have conduit undergrounded for broadband in some manner. You know, there's 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 a huge push, of course, trying to get broadband up here, so.
So um they all have to be undergrounded. Except for the lines right along Shaw's flat that serve other other properties. Uh Greg, are you still on there? I don't know um what the situation is with the broadband. Is Greg still on there?
We'll be running conduit for all the utilities through there. Um com- I believe Comcast is available. I need to recheck to see that they're going to be servicing that. Project. I don't think that there will be an issue. Internet is crucial. Um it seems to be running phone lines and and um. Everything else these days, so internet will be crucial and there will be conduit installed for all the utilities.
Okay, I just want to make sure, yeah, because. We need it up here and there's a big push, at least uh at the county as well, try to get um. You know. Better at a broadband up here, so. It only makes sense to dig once.
So.
Karen Foster again, but she still has no audio.
Uh Karen Foster, it it doesn't appear you have any audio on yours. There's there's no way for us to hear you. And then the men. So I think we should move on. So. Okay, so we'll bring this back to the council. Um I guess for a motion, do we have to do a motion for all or can we do? Do we have to do a motion for each one?
Do you do a motion for all or?
Okay. Yeah, I I have no problem doing it for all unless there's there's an issue.
Well, in that case, I will move to approve the amended Questa Heights vesting tentative subdivision map.
Uh Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Uh there was a hand raised after you closed public comment. Um Barbara Dressler, but you had already closed public comment at that time. So it is up to your discretion whether or not to open back up to receive the public comment.
Um and we did wait a while to see if we could get any hands raised, so I actually think we should move on on this one.
I have a feeling that she has a.
Oh, oh, okay.
A little different.
Yeah. Okay, a a new instruction on audio, so not not having to do with this.
So um for all public comments, it's raise your hand. The um. City clerk will unmute you or if you're on a phone, which no one appears to be on a telephone, it's star six.
Okay. Okay, so looking for.
I will.
Motion and a second.
Start again with my motion then to approve the amended Questa Heights vesting tentative subdivision map, reducing the number of lots to forty six. And the following phasing plan as presented by staff.
Okay, so is that are you doing all?
Yes, that includes the entirety uh one through four as presented. By to us by staff.
Okay, looking for a second.
Oh, second. But I do have something. I did do want to make a comment.
Oh, uh go ahead.
Okay, I I don't know if everyone else got the the email from Ms. Foster, um but I certainly did.
I did not.
And and I did did read it um. Um. And to and I am sure that she would have testified to her email and her point. Um however, i- in my mind, this is has has been a um approved project since two thousand and eight. And this is actually reducing the number of lots. Um and I, you know, I certainly understand having having a road um that's going to be emptying into or near your driveway. I particularly wouldn't want that, but Rob- Roble Road is also a city street, the city passageway. Uh so I understand her concerns, but I uh. I I think the time to to the time was at the time of the original one. To make that point and um get it not to get it approved at that point. And um uh I think that um. That with the modifications, like I said, reducing lot sizes or or the number of lots um. Uh I I think it's still a good project, a viable project. Um so. Uh that's why I'm going to go ahead and vote to approve it.
Okay, so thank you.
But I wanted to make I wanted to point that out that I certainly took Ms. Foster's. Uh email and and I have visited the site many times, so um. Uh I feel I can make a a good decision in that regard, but taking her concerns as well.
Thank you, council member. Um, okay, so motion by Mayor Pro Tim Plummer and second by Councilmember Garaventa. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hawkins.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Plummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Garaventa.
Aye.
Councilmember Sagerstrom.
Aye.
And Councilmember Satch.
Aye.
Okay, passes five to zero. Okay, on to monthly reports. Uh basically, we're receiving monthly reports. And. I think I lost the rest of my agenda. That's hilarious. I love our new agenda. Um. The way our agenda is being done because no like paper is not getting wasted. Occasionally, I lose something, which is the story of my life, so um. In this. I do. I have five children at home and I absolutely love it. My little circus. Um also, in under communications, receive an update from the Parking and Traffic Commission. And then council member and department head reports. Um. Mr. Gorski. Okay. Ms. Kevlock. I'm doing it out of order. I usually write it down and I just.
I wanted to let you know that our uh current inspector Darren Wardell, I know a lot of you have met him or. Maybe had him work on stuff with on a project maybe you were doing. He is retiring. Um as of the twenty third, he will he will no longer be with the city, so he um. Retired once and then went back and did this part time and now he is really retiring, so. He will be sorely missed. Um we will have a new inspector in place. Um as you know, that's a contracted position through Inner West, and so they're working on placements, so we. Um we will be moving forward, but I wanted to let you know when his last day was.
Thank you. Chief Vander Wheel.
Nothing else there, thank you.
Thank you. Chief New.
Uh nothing at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Our city attorney.
Nothing for me this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our city administrator.
Yeah, just a couple of important dates for the public. Um there is a special joint meeting with T U D this Thursday at ten A M, but the city council. Will be participating in. It's also joint with the Board of Supervisors and that will be held via Zoom. Um it is agendized on our website as well as the Board of Supervisors website as well as T U D's website. And then also again, um our goal setting session number two will be um held this coming Monday at twelve P M. Um and it will be held via Zoom as well. Um council members will be meeting in person, but it will be held via Zoom for the public.
Thank you.
Well, when will the agenda for that be posted?
Um like normal on Thursday, seventy two hours.
Thank you.
Okay, council member Sagerstrom.
Um I attended the yes partnership last Thursday meeting and I did mention the goal setting um meeting that would be coming up and they were interested. Um so I will send them the posting when it becomes available. Um this Thursday is the Central Sierra Economic Development Meeting. Um that what I will be attending. There's a biomass project that uh seems to be moving forward. Um uh also. The League of California Cities, I watched um a presentation today, uh update on legislation. Uh apparently, there's a bill in Congress with sixty five million, I think sixty five million dollars at least. Um that should go directly to cities and forty percent of that should. And 40% of that should go to cities under 50,000. So, um, we were encouraged to, um, write to our Congress people, our congressman, who, um, I hope is thinking about cities. I don't know. He doesn't seem to think about us very much, but we should all, um, connect with Congressman, um, now I can't even. McQuintock, sorry. And, um, encourage him to, uh, vote for this, uh, uh, this money to come back, um, COVID money to come back directly to cities. And it can be used, um, as less restrictive than the CARES money. So I, it's well worth, um, writing to Mr. McQuintock. Um, also, um, just for, um, uh, your preparation for the goal setting, I've been looking at other small cities' goals online and, and it's, it's a, um, really instructive about how we might, um, face or phrase our goals, um, and, you know, just, and how they've also set up their objectives and strategies. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Oh, and also thank you, Mr. Popovich and, um, and Rochelle for your really very, and Jerry Puccello for, um, all the information about the development. Cause it was very helpful.
Councilmember Garaventa.
Um, had, uh, well, one meeting, I guess, um, an almost a meeting. Uh, we had the solid waste committee meeting, uh, last Wednesday. Um, the basically was a update for most of the, the new board members that came on from the county. Um, uh, there was an update from Waste Management about pickups and, and being delayed by weather and kind of stuff like that. More, more applied to up in the, up in the hills and it really did for, for Sonora. They did talk about the green waste facilities and their, um, and removal of, um, waste pro- program that they're thinking of, of implementing. Um, they talked about the new laws of recycling. Um, where's the state has mandated about recycling of organic food, basically food waste. Um, and, um, also treated wood. So if you have like wood that's been pressure treated or, or you've put copper green on it, um, those are no longer acceptable in the landfill, have to be done specially, uh, disposed of specially from, from the new law. However, uh, because we're such a small county that we are actually exempt at least for a couple of years, I believe, and there may be a future option for another exemption and then, um, who knows what happens five years down the road, whether they, uh, do that or not. And, um, that's, that's pretty much it for solid waste. Uh, we did, we were scheduled to have a Transportation Council meeting, but because of the, uh, invert and, um, number, Zoom number was wrong on the thing. And the potential for having people comment on the meeting that couldn't get in until we got it fixed, we decided that, uh, we would postpone the Transportation Council meeting until tomorrow, uh, tomorrow at three. So, um, so you didn't miss anything. You can, uh, get in tomorrow. And I think Mary Rose is going to remind us that.
Tomorrow at four, sir.
Uh, tomorrow at four, that's right. Okay. I'm sorry. Oh, that's good. Actually, I was thinking three.
Fire.
Cause we have the fire thing beforehand. So that's it for me.
Councilmember Satch.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, I don't really want to be a thorn in the side of the Social Equity Committee, but it's been something over six months that they've been meeting. They were tasked with, um, to use the language we used, uh, to further develop a resi- resolution for possible adoption. I would like to see that brought back at our next meeting to discuss and hopefully adopt.
Perhaps asking for a completed resolution.
Well, it's been six months now. I think it's time for us to get it done and move on.
It won't be ready for the next meeting.
Well, then we'll talk about it, I suppose, and you will apprise me of that fact again, I'm sure.
So, um, sounds like we've got something that would like to be brought on the next meeting, but it sounds like it's not going to be, it couldn't be brought forward yet. So would it be possible to, to talk about it maybe mid the second meeting in March?
Well, I think we should at least to talk about where the Social Equity Committee is going and what they're doing. I think the next meeting would be perfectly appropriate, even if it won't be ready.
Okay. I just want to make sure, you know, I mean, it's, if, if we do everything half cocked, it, it doesn't work. So I want to make sure that we're.
Mr. Mayor, if I will, we do have a very full March 1st meeting with a lot of issues that will probably garner a lot of public interest. Um, it's my recommendation that, um, this item potentially be brought forth in the second meeting in March. However, um, Carrie, I'm looking to see if I have a, a majority of council members to bring back an item. And at this time, I'm only seeing two out of the five, unless there's another council member that would like to bring back a social equity item for discussion.
Well, we, if you're asking for my opinion on, we had five now six or six now seven goals that we were, the committee was supposed to be go for, and we're working on some of them. Um, to pick out one goal and ask for that to, to come at a certain time. Um, I'm not sure. It's not like we're not working on things. Uh, yeah, I would like the resolution as soon as possible too, but we have things we're working through. I don't see the, the need to, to rehash it really, um, in the near future. If it's, you know, was it March to, this is last February. So if it's, if, if something's not, you know, if, let us, my, my opinion is just let us go through and see what we, we get through. We've got through some of the goals. Um, we have a workshop coming up soon. Um, some of the members of the board, uh, or some of the members of the committee, um, would like to see the workshop before the, uh, resolution, because that would help them work on the resolution. So, um, I, I'm not really in favor it in the, in the, through February and in the month of March to bring it back. If we, there's still an issue and during, uh, April meetings in April, then maybe that's the best time for it.
I actually agree with Jim. I pulled my agreement about bringing it forward. I, I, I just think it's, it doesn't work that way, Mark. It's not, you know, it's not like.
Well.
And I know it's frustrating, but social equity isn't easy. It's not, it's not been easy and it's, we are making progress, I think, as a group.
Well, I see this.
Bring it to you when, you know, I mean, it's not like we're avoiding it.
It keeps on expanding and expanding. Now we've got public pushing us to expand it further, make it a full standing committee all the time. I see this and I think.
Councilmember, um, Plummer, we can't, we can't speak about this. It's been not been agendized. So I would, I would urge you not to speak at any length about this topic.
Thank you.
So I, I refrain. I think it would be best if we brought it back, um, you know, sometime in, we, we'd look at it sometime in April.
I, I'd say let, let us get through the workshop.
Okay.
I think that would be a huge help in us, in having the group write a meaningful resolution and not something that isn't, that is less meaningful.
Yeah, I always like, you know, I mean, even personally in my life, I like doing things planned. And if we take the steps and do it, I think that's most important. So, um, I, I, I'm cool with it coming back sometime in April. Uh, maybe our second meeting in March will, will address it then. I mean, to bring it back forward to April. So. Did you have anything else?
No.
Okay, um, I've been, just, just a quick update. I've been talking to different supervisors about different things. There is definitely a bridge that has been built between the city and the county, and I'm looking forward to more of the growth. Um, it's been a long, long, long road, as this whole council very well knows. And, uh, we're just going to keep pushing forward with, um, you know, open minds and open hearts, I guess you could, you could call it. So that's all I have. So meeting is adjourned at 6:43.